Good evening. We'll call the, what is today? August 8th, Board Meeting of the Village of Port Edwards to Order. First thing on the agenda is to ask the Clerk to do the roll, please.
Okay. Trustee Bingham. Hi, Allison. Trustee Duncan.
Here.
Trustee Grundon.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell.
Here.
Trustee Martenson.
Here.
And Trustee Saylor.
Here. And be it noted, Madam Clerk, that Trustee Bingham does have an excusal for this evening. He's down in Alabama, I believe. At least that's the last I can see of him on Facebook. I would ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. You remain standing for a brief moment of silence and under those who pay the ultimate sacrifice so we can enjoy the freedom tonight that we are experiencing. I am the Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, Limation Underwater, individual for liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Please be seated. First thing on the agenda for business will be a motion, I'd entertain a motion for the minutes of the July 11th of 2017 Board Meeting.
Move.
Second.
Okay, move by Trustee Duncan, second by Trustee Mitchell, to approve. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before we, I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the August 2nd post-session Board Meeting. Has every, all trustees had a chance to read them? Okay? I would entertain a motion.
Move.
Second.
Trustee Duncan made a motion to approve the August 2nd post-session meeting of the Village Board and second by Trustee Martenson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Okay, on to public comments. Only Mr. Bakoka of Reggie, glad to have you here, Rick, is wishing to speak. No one else is wishing to speak, so we will be, if it's okay, Rick, I'm going to have you speak under my President's Report at that time. And I, without objection from a trustee, I will watch you five minutes to go ahead. And then we've talked about pointing to the FHR Committee.
Yes, sir.
So, citizens appear to, none, and we have the President's Report. The first thing I would like to do is ask for a motion to receive the resignation of Rob Ziegler from the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals.
Vote.
Second.
Trustee Duncan made the motion, second by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. I would like to make the, or entertain a motion to make the appointment of Doug Caston to the Plan Commission and, two, separately. Trustee Duncan made the motion.
Second.
Second by Trustee Martenson to appoint Doug Caston to fill Rob's vacancy on the Plan Commission. Any discussion? Hearing, no requests. All those who signify by saying aye that are in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And then too, I would like to have a motion to appoint Lee Trummel to replace Rob Ziegler on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Martenson made the motion, second by Trustee Duncan. Any discussion? Hearing, no requests. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Now introducing Rick Bakoka, I'm sure most of you know he's involved with Reggie, and he's going to bring us up to speed here in his five-minute limit, but he will also be appearing on September 7th. Finance and Human Resources, we can bring us more on the scale of range from probably a little bit on the airport where Rick and I were involved in that, to the Sand Valley operation. Mr. Bakoka.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Greetings, Village Trustees. This is the first time I've had a chance to address all of you new trustees since you were sworn in. My congratulations. I spent 22 years as elected official in our town and it's service not many outside of those who do it appreciate it. I'm here tonight just to introduce myself and the new trustees as the President of Reggie. Reggie is Regional Economic Growth Initiative. My position with them allows me to interact between many small municipalities that do not have economic development coordinators or organizations to provide you with information that you might not otherwise come up with by yourself and to encourage interaction between communities on projects that benefit all. Reggie was very instrumental in the siting of Cyber One here in Port Edwards. I visited Rick and Jamie today. Everything seems to be going well. They have new customers. They're very appreciative. That Cyber One business was available and in place because of the quarter-mile TIP rule, that anything within a quarter-mile of your TIP is eligible for that TIP funding will tell you that the village participation in that agreement and the help of Mr. Apps was very instrumental in making that happen. What's going to happen next is, over the next two to three years, the YMCA here will be relocated. There's a lot of information that's forthcoming. It's not my position to share that other than to tell you that Reggie has a role in that relocation, and one of its obligations is to keep the Village of Port Edwards informed as to your opportunities and availability as the use of these buildings change. We remind this Board that the YMCA and the acreage and the buildings fall under that umbrella of the TIP, and there may be some business opportunities to utilize those buildings. I realize that you're losing a lot of traffic draw here, but as those negotiations occur and those moves occur, I would like you to rely on Reggie and the I to bring you information about what's occurring and how we can help the village. Slight update on Sand Valley. Sand Valley is away and doing well. They're averaging 5,000 rounds of golf per month. Multiply that times 200 if you want to know the gross cash. Virtually at capacity for right now. The second course opened nine holes August 1st. It's available for play. Anyone of you who would like a personal tour, just contact me, and I will be glad to give you a personal tour of you and all the Port Edwards people that would like to see what's going on out there. The airport is reporting July over July, 100% in traffic in jets, 100% more than last year July, 100% more jet fuel, and the $4 million airport expansion that Reggie had a part in obtaining is sitting on the Governor's Desk waiting for the budget to be signed. And lastly, the city of Nacousses, your neighbors to the north, are engaged at this time in strategic planning for their community. It's not a board thing, it's a community thing, where the village, the Village Board there, or the City Board in Nacousses, is engaging in their community to find out what they would like Nacousses to look like and to become as an identity in the years to come so that economic development can help them plan. So, the next meeting we have there is August 24th. Saratoga Board members have been coming to those meetings as well to find out about the strategic planning process, and I would like to invite any and all of you that'd like to come to that meeting at 6 o'clock at the Nacousses Community Center on August 24th to see strategic planning in place. And what that may encompass, I will tell you that Reggie was just instrumental in facilitating an agreement between the City of Wisconsin Rapids and the Village of Bearden on a road connection and a bike trail connection. There are pieces in place now that a bike trail could become a reality in the next three or five years from Lucky Park in Plover along the Wisconsin River, down through Bearden, through Wisconsin Rapids, through Port Edwards, Nacousses, Saratoga, and Rome, all the way out to Sand Valley. It'd be about a 55-mile bike trail. So, I'd like to be on the agenda. I'm going to come to your Executive Committee meeting and explain a lot of these things in more detail to you. I think you're going to be very interested in what the Village of Port Edwards will be able to do with them. On behalf of Reggie and myself, thank you for the time tonight at this meeting, and wish you all the very best for your community.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
We will look forward then, and you will be in touch with Chairman Martenson?
Yes.
For, if you tell you guys when it's at. And that meeting will be done after the minutes.
Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted, the last thing on the President's Report, we had a couple committee minutes not get in on time, and I would strongly encourage the Secretaries to make sure that the Secretary gets them, the Village Secretary, so we can include them. We're going to have a Board Meeting coming up on the 14th, so we get the minutes, we can include them on the open session of that meeting next Monday. So, just encourage you, please get those minutes in, because right now we'll just be able to have our two committees without their minutes give us a brief overview. I guess it's about all we can do. The first one would be, for committee reports, would be the Streets, Infrastructure, Recreation, and Cemetery Committee. We can, I guess, we're not dealing with both, into approving the minutes of the meeting, so I guess I would ask, Mr. Bingham's not here, if Dana, you wanted to just request a approval of those minutes, or if you had a rough draft with you or anything, because there's nothing in the package. Well, what we'll do is, we're just going to have to pass and add, approve the minutes. Hopefully, we will have the minutes for our special Board Meeting we're having on August 14th. We'll have an open session before we go into the closed session on that day. Okay, moving on to Planning Property Information Technology Committee. Chairman Martenson.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, excuse me, to allow nine-foot setback in lieu of the 20-foot setback at 611 Seneca Road as recommended by the Plan Commission.
Second.
Okay, motion by Trustee Martenson, second by Trustee Mitchell for the nine-foot setback in lieu of the 20-foot setback at 611 Seneca Road as recommended by the Plan Commission. I would call for discussion, and I would like to turn it over to Attorney Apps. There's a little, I'll let him explain.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. So regarding the Village's procedure to, as far as approving variances, I know in the recent past, this has been done a couple of times where the Plan Commission has been directly involved. And while state statute appears to permit the Village some leeway on this, it's a highly irregular way of approaching the granting of variances. Typically, it's the Board of, the Zoning Board of Appeals that actually has this authority, which means that regardless of what the Village does tonight, the Zoning Board of Appeals can still overturn. The Zoning Board of Appeals has ultimate authority with their respective variances, and they're the ones that are actually supposed to, under statute, be making the decision. And by running it through the Plan Commission and by running it through the Village Board, in my opinion, the Village Board is actually potentially opening itself up to some liability, to some direct challenges, not to mention the fact that convening the Plan Commission for such a purpose is an extra meeting that doesn't need to be held, and the fact that the Village Board could be spending a lot of time in this format, dealing with challenges to any, any requests for variances, both, both the requests and challenges from the public. Anything that the Village says is not going to be any more final than the opinion of the Village Administrator or anybody else that's actually making a decision on the spot. It would be my recommendation that the Village actually subscribe to the ordinary procedure for the reasons of efficiency and also reducing liability to the Village, reducing the possibility that the Village is going to actually have waste, both now and in the future, in dealing with an issue that has to do with variances. The Zoning Board of Appeals, in fact, is, I mean, the buck is essentially designed to stop with them in these cases, and the Village Board really doesn't need to be involved in these decisions at all. And I also want to be clear that this is not an opinion on the substantive nature of this particular variance or any other variance, whether or not this variance is something that the Board of, the Zoning Board of Appeals should permit. But it's my opinion that this is more properly put in the realm of the Zoning Board of Appeals rather than the Board of Trustees.
Okay, Mr. Apps, any discussion? So we're going to withdraw that motion then and send it to the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Well, it would be, as far as the Zoning Board of Appeals, it's up to the property owner to, what the property owner should be, should be able to do instead of, and this actually creates problems for the property owner as well, involving the Plan Commission and the Village Board as well, because the property owner should be able to go directly from the Administrator to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And that way, it cuts out, in this case, there's two middlemen that we've created for, for really no reason. It gets, I mean, there are more eyes on it, but really, with all due respect to the members of the Village Board of Trustees, there isn't any reason that anybody here needs to have the additional zoning expertise and the additional time going into assessing these particular zoning issues that the Zoning Board of Appeals would presumably spend time doing. Did I express that?
Very well. And that's the composition of the Zoning Board of Appeals, it's five citizens. There's no trustees involved, and that generally gives you an idea that we want to keep the politics out of it. And I think Attorney Apps hit the nail right on the head. I guess we would, correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, but if we go through and have a vote and fails, then our property owner has the direct right to request the Zoning Board of Appeals to look at the matter. And we kind of had a little discussion before the Board Meeting, too, just to let her know about what was going to transpire.
And that's correct.
Thank you, sir. So, a motion of contrary to table, and I don't think really accomplishes anything, so I would ask that we vote on this. Aye vote would be to approve as it stands now, and aye vote would simply, basically, in my opinion, correct something that was a procedural thing, and then we go to the area of the avenue that we should have. So you're asking to approve it now, and then the next? No, no, I said if you vote yes, and then if we deny it by voting no, then the property owner can request the Board of Review to look at it. It's basically correcting the procedural thing.
May I also, I would also recommend that the pit committee just review the ordinance, and I've, there's a letter that I've drafted and sent to the Administrator that should be distributed shortly, as it's been already, in which I suggest just a minor change to the ordinance for clarification, so this issue doesn't, doesn't pop up again where there's, there's justified confusion over whether the Plan Commission or the Zoning Board of Appeals is the proper, proper venue for the such variance request. Does that make sense to everybody?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
So is this, I'm just, whatever. You're asking for this to, is it to fill something, or?
Actually, what it is is that we would like to build a, for the back of our garage on multiple buildings that are all attached to my garage. It's a party shed, it's a garden shed, and a wood shed. And that's all we want to do. We want to go along the existing line of my back of my garage to continue it, and they're saying that we're zoned agricultural one, therefore we have to be 25 feet, but we're less than five acres, we're actually 1.5, but we can't be zoned, no one wants to rezone residential one or in that area, because we don't have running water, we don't have running sewer, none of the city perks that one would get with residential one, and no one wants that. But all I'm asking is for my little piece of property. I'm not asking to rezone anything. I would just like to say, hey, at least go ahead and build your shed. This has been three months of fighting, and whatever way I can, what's going to done?
Follow the Board's resolve, build it every, to be there every week. As soon as she will make her appeal or want to go to them, then we will set up a meeting for that. And the legislature has to move a five, so many people, so many feet inside of her in writing that this, this review is going to take place and have a right to appear before the Zoning Board.
I would also recommend, if I may, that the property owner be refunded any fee from, that was required to be paid to the Plan Commission for, prior to that meeting, having been held, if this is going to go back to the Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, because presumably she would have to submit another fee for that purpose.
It's already done, it's in the papers.
Oh, okay.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I will repeat that a vote of aye will be to move it as is, and a vote of nay will be to deny it, with the understanding that the property owner has the right, as we beat that horse dead, to the Board Review, and it's a procedural thing that will be corrected vainly by Chairman Martenson, your committee. I've looked at the ordinance that Attorney Apps has talked about, and it's just a one-line thing, and we'll be good at all.
I've got that right here.
Okay. So, I will call for a vote. Everybody understand now what they'd be voting for? Okay, when I call, all those in favor of approving the variance as is by the Plan Commission will signify by saying aye, and those opposed will be signifying by saying nay.
Nay.
And that motion fails, so if you need any help, I will be glad to, you know, you just give me a call and I'll help you through the process. Okay? We'll get together with Rick, because he'll be contacting the residents and the commission members, the Board of Review members. Okay, Chairman Martenson.
Motion to appoint James Wiser, Luanne Martenson, Eric Saylor, and Rick Ted as members of the East Side Fire Station Ad-Hoc Committee.
Motion by Trustee Martenson, second by Trustee Mitchell to appoint James Wiser, Luanne Martenson, Eric Saylor, and Richard Paytas members of the East Side Fire Station Ad-Hoc Committee. Any discussion? Maybe Chairman Martenson, did you just, why we revive this or trying to get the meetings going?
We're, we're trying to get these meetings started again. Apparently, this was something that has been put on the back burner, and it's important that we at least start having meetings so that we can make some decisions as to what's going to happen across the river over by the natural property. So we did get this committee together, and we can, as long as this is accepted, then we'll go forward and set a date for a meeting, our first meeting.
Questions? Hearing, no request. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries.
No, I'm sorry, oh, excuse me. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Martenson, second by Trustee Grundon to approve the minutes. I would just ask that the last line of Section 4, a meeting will be held on August 8th, 2017, at 6:00 PM at the Edwards Alexander Shelter, be struck. It's a meeting that was canceled, but these were already done. Everybody okay with that? All those in favor approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Trustee. Our Chairman Martenson. Okay, moving on, Public Safety, again, we didn't have the minutes in, but we will, will, any motions from CIRC or Public Safety, we will get it on the Monday, August 14th, Special Board Meeting, clear that up before we go into open session. Okay? But Chairman Mitchell, if you would just go over a thing that doesn't, I guess it, just a, well, you explain.
I'll see if I can, because I'm still not going to say much. President Zerplu, Attorney Apps, and myself, as Chair of the Public Safety Committee, received a letter which we're really not going to comment on. It really has to do with a civil issue, and we don't feel that it merits any public conversation, so it will be filed as part of our correspondence.
It will be duly noted, and I might say that the Fire Chief, Jim Wiser, has met with the complainant that issued the letter and also with the other partners.
And also.
It's a civil matter, it really is no, none of our, it's the chief's business, not ours, so.
Correct.
It's more of a preventative thing, I guess, than anything. So, thank you. Finance and Human Resources Committee. Back to Chairman Martenson.
I'd like to make a motion to approve payment of the bills.
Motion to approve payment of the bills, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Duncan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve the journal entries of the previous month.
Motion to approve the journal entries of the previous month by Chairman Martenson. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Grundon. Any discussion? All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And I'd like to make a motion to hire two more part-time police officers for a total of four part-time police officers.
Motion by Chairman Martenson to hire two more part-time police officers to give us a total of four part-time police officers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Grundon. Any discussion? Do you want to, do you have anything to say on the matter?
I would like to mention that we did have an individual who has left the police department. It was a full-time position, there was a request to fill that full-time position. However, at this time, I would feel more comfortable if we just add the two part-time police officers and leave it with four part-time officers and our three, other three full-time officers. I just feel that we've got, the committee felt that the situation that the Village is sitting in right now, we want to be a little bit proactive on our finances, and we'd like to review this a little bit further down the line, see how things are going. I also want to mention that at this time, we only have, we have two officers who are part-time, but one officer is not able to work part-time for us, as I understand, because he's got a conflict with another employer, which is understandable, and we just want to work through this, so we'll move in the direction to pull in two part-time officers that would be hired.
Anybody else? Chairman Mitchell.
Okay.
It looks like you're going to say something.
I'd love to say, well, for a total of four.
Yes.
So, four people who can work part-time.
Part-time, right, correct.
And the one part-time officer, Assistant Chief Racky, he has a full-time job with the Sheriff's Department?
With Adams County Sheriff's Department, he's on probationary period, so he cannot work any other employment until that's been.
Will that be cleared up with, once he clears probation, or is it like Wood County where they can't have second employment?
My understanding is Adams County, you can have second employment, just a probationary period that needs to be satisfied.
And as I understand, excuse me, because I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, we do have another individual, but he has not completed his training yet.
Correct. He actually will start. He actually will start his training on the 21st, but he will be available on Saturday for the Fun Fest.
Okay.
In the public.
Too early to say when he souls? I want to make sure at home, safe and sound. Anyway.
So I'm looking at hiring three part-timers, since we already have one part-time?
We actually have two part-time right now.
Cody, Mr. Marcus.
Right. Mr. Marcus hasn't actually put in any time yet with us, because he's still completing his training. So that, that gives us two, so we've approved, right, hiring two more.
Basically, we're back to the previous order, and there are two, you know, approvals. So we feel those will be. And I also think it's good just to spend two years that we went to a fourth full-time position, and I agree with Chairman Martinson that due to financial things, not knowing some things that are on the horizon in the village, and also, we used to have three full-timers and four part-timers, so, just see how it goes. Okay. All those in favor of hiring two more, two more part-time officers for a total of four on the department, part-time officers, did I say that okay, Chairman Mitchell?
Or people who can work.
Or, yeah, there we go.
Who can work part-time.
Well, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And we're staying right with you, Chairman Martinson, for the Airport Commission, minutes of.
First off, make a motion to approve the minutes of the Finance and HR Committee.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
Motion to approve the minutes of the Finance and Human Resource Committee, second by trustee Duncan, any discussion? All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you for correcting me, Madam. Now, the airport minutes of 7th of July 6th and July 20th, 2017. Did Katie give you any comments?
No, I did not have any comments, and I'll just mention that on the 7th, excuse me, the 6th of July, the tree removal does continue, it was discussed, and that is taking out trees in the area. And also, pre-construction meeting for the taxiway construction project was forthcoming, and the date to be determined. And the commission hangar is still under reconstruction, and the damaged hangar door has been removed, and the hangar is utilizable again, utilizable.
Easy for goodness sake.
There was nothing of new business on that particular date, on July 20th. It was all old business that was discussed, and they did want to propose changing the rental fee from $150 to $250, and that was due to some different accommodations made for the renters. There's barriers that will be put up to direct wedding traffic to the venue and keep visitors away from the private hangars for that August wedding. Other than that, I think that's it, and I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 6th and the July 20th meeting meetings.
Motion to approve the July 6th, July 20, 2017, Southwood County Airport Commission meeting minutes by Chairman Martinson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? I'd just like, would you have Commissioner Martinson let us know when that taxiway meeting's going to be held?
Certainly.
I'd like to attend to that. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Do we have any unfinished business from previous meetings? Anybody have any new business? Or department apps? No, we will go to Madam Clerk.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. Communications, I have a few here. Do you have those close session minutes? First and foremost, we have a thank you from the family of Rita Schneider. Dear Village Board, your kind expression of sympathy is deeply appreciated and gratefully acknowledged by the family of Rita Schneider. Rita was a longtime teacher at Midstate Technical College, and she was, seems like village clerk, she was a village clerk when I started with the police department back in 1978, when I had black hair and a lot more of it. A person, she's kind of like Ms. Port Edwards in a sense, and Marshall, I know you worked with her for many years also. And then she went on to the Village Board after that for probably 10 years, I would say, and Rita will be greatly missed, so I wanted to acknowledge her. Then there's a, I received an invitation from ERCO Worldwide, we're celebrating our 50th anniversary, 1967 to 2017. It is going to be held on Wednesday, September 13, 2017, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., out at the plant. Lunch will be provided, RSVP card is here, it's a rain or shiny event, and I want to know if any trustees would be interested in attending.
Excuse me, what was the date, Madam?
September 13, 2017. So.
I will be in Phoenix.
Okay.
I may go.
I don't know if they have an RSVP doya, 1 September 2017, Friday. Now, if anybody is interested, I will have them there, okay?
I'll keep it back to you.
All right. Anybody else, communications?
Yes.
Okay, Rick?
Regarding that, people did call me asking if we had crossing guards for hire. I spoke with, I don't believe we do, so I'm going to let them know that we don't have anybody we can hire out for them to work at that event. We don't hire a police department, I don't believe, right?
They want to.
They're looking, they want to know if we had a service that we can provide crossing guards.
Like we used two years ago. Assistant Chief Frankie, would that be possible with our school crossing guards, since they're trained and know, or?
I know that we have one that may be available, I can check with her and see, but in the past, we have actually provided a one-time crossing for.
So then I will get back to them and say that's a possibility, we're checking into it?
Yes. Tell them that they should contact Chief Iverson, when she's back from her military.
I wasn't sure if we would hire other crossing guards or not.
We actually had done that in the past, so.
It's going to be quite a crowd, and the design of that curb is not the best, so.
I think they're looking for several to say, oh, no, there's only one.
Okay. I know that we have two that right now that may be available, we have to check with them.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, committee meeting calendar, please trustees, correct me if I just read anything here. Monday, August 14, 4:30 p.m., special board meeting that will be held here at Edwards Alexander Pavilion. The first part of that, we will try and catch up on our motions that we missed tonight, and then we'll go into closed session. Attorney Apps will be drawing up the agenda part for the closed session. We have some trustees that have another commitment at 6:00 p.m., so that's why we moved it up to 4:30, and I appreciate all of you for making a special commitment to make that meeting. Then the next night, Tuesday, August 15, at 5:00 p.m. in the municipal building, the Streets Infrastructure, Recreation, and Cemetery Committee will meet. Tuesday, August 22, at 5:00 p.m., the Property Planning and Information Technology Committee will meet at 5:00 in the municipal building. Tuesday, September 5, at 5:00 p.m., the Public Safety Committee will meet, that will be in the municipal building. Then Thursday, September 7, at 5:00 p.m., the Finance and Human Resource Committee will meet, that will also be in the community or in the municipal building. And finally, Tuesday, September 12, at 7:00 p.m., the Village Board meeting, regular one, will be held here at Edwards Alexander Shelter.
I will be absent.
On the board meeting?
Yep. I have a business conference with Tim that whole week.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, let me know if something comes up that you cannot make that meeting. Finally, I would like to thank those in attendance for tonight. It's always nice to see folks show up and show an interest in their local government. Also, to those that will be watching at 3 o'clock all Thursdays on Wisconsin Rapids Community Media, we enjoy being able to bring that to the rest of our residents. And again, I would like to thank Jesse Austin, man extraordinaire, for being here representing the community media folks. So, yes.
Also, if you have any notice on the board's website, I have a link now for the video. So you can click on that, you don't even have to go to YouTube, you can just click on it, and it'll take you to last month's meeting. As soon as I get this one up, this one will be on there also.
All righty, anybody else, climax? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, or motion made by trustee Martinson, second by trustee Grundon, all those in favor.
Aye.
Please adjourn. Thank you.